From championship athletics to award-winning academics and a legacy of school spirit, Marietta Valley has become a place where generations grow, learn, and thrive together.
Marietta is easily the most adaptable place I have moved to. People here are very welcoming.
The reason why I moved to Marietta was for the school districts, for my kids to grow and learn.
So not only am I a legacy employee, but I also have family that work in the district. I have my mom that taught here for many years and a sister that still teaches in the district. And now my kids are in the district.
MBUSD is the first district to have over five Purple Star schools in our county. So that signals our appreciation and support for military families.
We have about 4,000 of our students are military-connected, meaning mom or dad are either active or retired members of one branch of the armed services.
I immediately noticed the schools themselves incorporated the communities. Saturday afternoon, youth football, church here on Sundays, and that is just, that means everything.
The very first schoolhouse in Marietta was built in 1885. So for nearly 100 years, we were just a one-school community. In the eighties, we started to grow and we saw more housing coming in and we added a couple more elementary schools in some of our communities that were now growing. It's actually 1989, on the ballot, the voters of Marietta voted to unify the district. That energy to become our own community, both school district and city, made it really special. Fast forward to today, in 2025, we have 21,500 students at 20 different locations. We've grown, and that's a lot to maintain because we house that many students. There's over 1,000 classrooms every day that we take care of.
We have facilities all across the city that are accessed every night of the week. I would say the usage has probably increased by a magnitude of five or six, and it's the same facilities that have existed over all those years.
These are very busy places.
We were designed for 1,800 students and we now hold about 3,400 students. So that makes all of our facilities a little bit too small or way too small to accommodate for each student comfortably.
As we were building schools, it was coming so fast. And so we have portable classrooms that were temporary, they're now just part of our school.
So we'd love to take those portable buildings and replace them with real buildings that'll last for decades to come.
It is important that we have updated technology that we will see used in real-life jobs that kids are going to have to interact with in their future. Our CTE programs that are being funded help allow the students to get real-life job experience within their classes.
We have an engineering class, we have a couple of engineering classrooms, but that isn't welding, that's not construction, that's not HVAC or electrical or plumbing or any of the industrial trades that we'd like to teach. I have a very strong interest in bringing those facilities and those instructional programs to this community.
So I think our facilities and our programs will prepare kids for whatever comes next, whether that's college, a career in the military, or directly into the workforce.
Our community expects us to remain the best district in the county. When we build something, it has to last for decades. It can't be a short-term fix that's just a few years. We only have a few chances in a school's lifetime to do something and do it right.
So the district's going to embark on a master plan for facilities to look at everything from the bottom of the building to the top of the building, see where we need new facilities in the district. We really need to hear from the community, we really want to hear your feedback every step of the way.
It is important that you stay involved and know this is your community. Get involved in the process, learn what their needs are, and see how it's done.
Walking into a modernized or a very clean facility or school is inspiring for me to want to go there and learn.
It's important that our schools create those opportunities, that they're built and equipped, so we can create those experiences that young people would be inspired. Our facilities and our schools need to be a reflection of our community. This is about people, this is about families, helping young people become bigger and older people, to pursue their dreams, to be inspired to try and do something, to do something they never thought they could do before. Our facilities and our schools need to be a reflection of our community. And so now is the time to make investments in our schools for our children that will pay dividends for generations to come.
Families here benefit from outstanding schools, well-loved facilities, rich opportunities, and a quality of life that continues to grow. For 35 years, our schools have been more than just classrooms. They've been the foundation of a community with a strong sense of belonging and why I'm proud to say we are Marietta Valley.
Welcome. Sure.
Some people stand for justice. Some people avoid the law. Some give up for the honor to defend the worthy cause. Some people stand for freedom and do everything they can to fight for the right to defend their fellow men. Well, we say thank you for the good you do each day. And for all of those you help along the way. And for standing tall to always take our part. We say thank you from the bottom of our heart. In every hero's story, there's a great tale to write. It's not about the glory and it's not about the fight. It's standing up for justice and it raises in the game. Tonight is a better world for humankind. Well, we say thank you for the good you do each day. And for all of those you help along the way. And for standing tall to always take our part. We say thank you from the bottom of our heart. And we say thank you for the good you do each day. And for all of those you help along the way. And for standing there to do your part. We say thank you from the bottom of, from the very bottom. Thank you from the bottom of our heart.
This is a fun one. This is called Touchdown in the Kitchen, and it is a fun one about preparing for the Thanksgiving holiday. You want to try it?
Are you ready for some turkey? Would you like to eat? I gotta dance in the turkey. I'm pretty sure I got the love, huh? I'm lucky I'm a winner, I'm walking out the game, got a story, so you ready to dance with me? Are you ready for some turkey? Let's drink one, one. There's a touchdown in the kitchen. Mom's got a great eggplant. There's a touchdown in the kitchen, and I'm her greatest fan. Outside on the sofa, mom's working in the round. She put the rice and purple potatoes and a redberry smile on her mouth.
Why don't you do the turkey, Mom?
Stop it, stop it. Push it back, push it back. Way back. Hit him again, hit him again. Harder, harder. Oh dear, I tried to get the purple star. Oh, put the pressure on it, try to save.
No, no, I tried, I tried.
Go, go. Go, boy.
No, no, we're never gonna make it. And, huh?
Are you ready for some turkey? Would you like to have some pie? I'm getting a little murky. I'm gonna have a little slush. And those potatoes, I'm working on the game, got a full refrigerator, 'cause that's the way I am. Are you ready for some turkey? I'm gonna game twelve, one, and the feast begins. Late in the day, no tacos left, but the fork is running down. This will definitely be the last meal of the day. She's back, she's thanked the mist, worked up the food, she's back to the kitchen. She talks, she makes, she cleans, slices, dices, and hot dogs. It's a perfect butterball. Three, one, three, one, yeah, yeah, three, one. Let it eat! Momma's got a secret weapon, a recipe for success. Dinner's served at halftime, and we'll all clean up the mess. No! Are you ready, are you ready, are you ready, are you ready, are you ready for some turkey? Would you like to have some pie? I'm getting a little murky. We can talk it on the fun. And those potatoes, I'm working on the game, got a full refrigerator, 'cause that's the way I am. Are you ready for some turkey? I'm gonna game twelve, one, and the feast begins. All done!
So we just want to say thank you to the parents and our students at Coal Canyon and our fabulous teachers who make it happen, right? We couldn't do this without moms and dads and our teachers for these awesome experiences as a young student, right? I mean, who thought you'd come to a school board meeting and get to sing about turkey, right? I didn't know that was in the curriculum, but that's awesome. So congratulations, thank you for sharing your talents, and we wish you happy holidays. Thank you for coming. Thank you, everyone. So those in the middle, our students are going to leave, so we're going to have our folks clear out the center, and our students are going to make their way out. And we'll take a few minutes for those who aren't sticking around for the rest of the board meeting, so you guys can make your way. Thank you.
I, Nicholas Bardou, hereby call the Board of Education regular meeting to order at 5:12 p.m. Please note that this meeting is being both recorded and livestreamed for public viewing. Please note that this meeting is being both recorded and livestream for public viewing. I would like to welcome the community members in attendance this evening. As a reminder, governing board meetings are a business meeting of the board held in public, and although public participation is encouraged, it is not the public's meeting. It is a duty of the board president and/or the clerk to maintain an orderly, respectful, and peaceful meeting where all perspectives, voices, and opinions are welcome. Please refrain from speaking while another person has the floor. We have a quorum present with all board members in attendance. I call on Ms. Josephina Hartley for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Item C4, I call for approval of the agenda. I called for a motion.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, 5-0. Item D1, special recognition, and I'm calling Dr. Andrus.
Thank you, I'll join down at the podium, I'll speak from there. Thank you, trustees and members of the audience, we have two special recognitions of our schools and their school leaders we'd like to recognize tonight and formally recognize them. The first is Dorothy McLehaney Middle School, so if you'd like to come forward, this is our administrative team and whoever else you might have brought. Okay. All right, thank you. This is our principal Heather Just and our assistant principal, Dr. Rogers and Ms. Slife. And so these are two assistant principals, and so we'd like to recognize them and present a small certificate. But on behalf of our district, Dorothy McLehaney was recognized at the national level until the Board of Education eliminated this recognition, but the state picked it up. This is the only school in all of Riverside County as a blue ribbon award-winning school, so congratulations. So it's not very, and it's the only one Riverside County, very few of them, there's only 31 across the entire state, off the entire state. Now keep in mind, there's 1,000 school districts, 1,049 school districts in the entire state of California, there are thousands of schools, and we are one of 31, and that's our little own Dorothy McLehaney. And that's our teachers and our parents and our students making that difference. Even though we gave you one piece of paper, you can share it with everybody. All right. Next, I'd like to recognize Alta Marietta, so if you'd like to come forward, everyone from the Alta Marietta team. This is kind of unique, we haven't done this before, but we want to recognize something very special. And so we have Cassie Caldwell and Jessica Rose for assistant principal and a team of educators, this is grade-level team, right?
These are members of my leadership and, oh, hello. I have members of my administrative team, our school counselor, our professional learning community team leaders, and our logistical team leaders.
So we want to recognize Alta Marietta, something very unique in both math and language arts, they made tremendous growth, tremendous academic growth, far above the averages of the district. I think you were 10, you were double digits in terms of percentage of growth year over year for math and language arts. That is remarkable and somewhat unheard of, so something magical happened, but I think it's actually very specific. I've actually said that often too many times there's random acts of education, and this was not. This was very specific, thoughtful, targeted work with our students and our families specifically, where teachers really got together and made some tremendous growth. So we just want to recognize Alta Marietta, and you're all in matching shirts in blue. Thank you so much for being here tonight, thank you.
And now we move on to item D2, and I'd like to call on, this is for the student presentations, I'm going to call on Dorothy McLehaney Middle School Principal Heather Just.
So good evening, Board of Education, once again, I'm Heather Just, the new principal at Dorothy McLehaney Middle School. I'm going to take up zero minutes of your time because I want the students to tell you about our amazing new career exploration class, so I'd like to introduce our amazing, talented teacher Saul Petchers.
I don't have to adjust it, that's great. Yeah, this is our dog, it's our mascot here for our careers class here, so we'll tell you a little bit about our class. My name is Solomon Petchers, and this year I've had the privilege of teaching incredible elective to an equally incredible group of 6th through 8th grade students. In my career explorers class, students gain hands-on knowledge in fields such as materials processing and design, emergency fire management, dentistry, cosmetology, alternative energy, nursing, and it's about 10 other ones here, I thought we had a little presentation there, but we use the Paxton Patterson Program, which has been a powerful addition to our school. It's helping students discover real-world skills, explore potential career interests, and beginning to start thinking about the pathways that they're going to take when they go to high school.
Solomon?
Yes.
You have the remote right in front of you.
I do. There it is, okay, gotcha. These are my presenters here, so, there we go, thank you. These are the classes that we, the modules that we have at our site here. Tonight, I'm proud to have several of these students here with me, I didn't even have to beg for them to come, I asked for volunteers, and they were genuinely excited, actually I had 12 kids who wanted to participate in this, and I had to narrow it down, so there is this, here's a picture of many of our kids in action, this is only eight of our groups, but I'm going to turn it over to Noah, come on down buddy, you got this.
Hello, board members, Dr. Andrus, and distinguished guests, my name is Noah, I'm in 8th grade, and I'm currently in the career explorer's class at DMMS. The modules I have been a part of are cosmetology, dentistry, and materials and processing. Some activities I've done include shaving a client's beard, drilling and filling cavities, and heating and bending an acrylic phone stand. The part of the class I've enjoyed the most is the hands-on activities that let me get firsthand experience on these careers. Being a part of this class has helped me think about my future differently. I know really is that there are a lot of different opportunities and careers that align with my interests, thank you.
Hi, my name is Chelsea Baker, and I'm an 8th grader at Dorothy McLehaney Middle School. I have taken the cosmetology course, the dentistry course, and the materials processing course. The activities that I have done during these courses are creating my own set of nails, creating a wooden phone stand, and lastly, cleaning plaque off of a tooth model. My favorite thing about this class is the wide variety of hand-on activities and learning about the different roles that these jobs take on. I believe that this class is important since it is open to all grade levels, opens new opportunities to meet new people that have the same interests as you, and lastly, allows students to explore new things and pursue them later on in life, that's all, thank you.
Hi, my name is Alisa Pallayo, I am in 7th grade, and I am currently in Career Explorers at DMMS. Some modules I have been involved with are nursing EMT, and I am currently in the module sports medicine. In the module nursing, we took out blood from a fake arm and used the same tool as real nurses. As an EMT, we learned CPR, and currently in sports medicine, we have done activities that involve checking pulse. The part of the class that I have enjoyed most is nursing, because I have learned things that might be necessary in the real world. Being part of the class helped me think differently about my future, because it allowed me to experience things I will in the future, and it helped me change my perspective on what I will do.
Hello, my name is Malani, I'm in 7th grade, and I'm in Career Explorers at DMMS. Currently, I'm trying out sports medicine, but in the past, I've also done nursing and emergency medical technician. In these modules, I was able to take blood from a prop arm, learn CPR, and learn how to control the loss of blood. In careers, I really enjoyed being able to try out different fun things with my partner Alisa, and getting a better understanding of what different jobs actually get to do. Being in this class introduced me to trying out new things that I thought wouldn't be my thing, but I always enjoyed. Originally, I wanted to be a nurse and work with medicine, but in Career Explorers opened me up to being an EMT and working with wounds and injuries.
Hello, my name is...
Hello, my name is Kinsley, and I have done the modules veterinarian, cosmetology, and currently I'm doing home maintenance. I have done, in these modules, I have done animal CPR, painted nails, and changed faucets. I think this class is important because it gives students the opportunity to see what classes, what jobs they're interested in, and what they want to be when they're older.
Hi, my name is Alexis Perozzo, and I'm in 8th grade. One of my electives at DMMS is career exploration. One module I enjoyed doing was criminalistics. I worked with fingerprints, blood spatter analysis, and more important activities. One of my favorite thing about this class is learning with hands-on materials and real-life scenarios. I think that this class is important for middle school students because it can be used as motivation and independent skills.
Good evening, my name is Jessie Petchers, I'm in 6th grade, and I'm in careers explorer at DMMS. The modules I've been involved with are computer graphics and game development, home maintenance, and alternative energy. I have designed a video game level, I have ran electricity, and as of now, I'm building a small windmill. My favorite part of this class is the hands-on activities because they really show me what the career is all about, and they're also really fun. This class is important for middle school students because it really makes you think about the future and helps you make the decision of what you are doing for the rest of your life. Thank you.
The little guy was mine at the end. Yeah, this class has been really good, it's been really great for our students. I have students that today, I know, Kinsley, you changed the faucet today in a sink and changed the cartridges in the faucet itself. When they say they drew blood out of an arm, we have a prosthetic arm that we put fake blood in, and they're using needles, a butterfly needle, and they are drawing the blood, they're learning to, the wound care, what else do we have, guys, what other things?
Windmill?
Windmill and alternative energy, yeah?
Yeah.
What? That's amazing.
And CPR, we use this dog here for CPR, and the kids, and it is all 100%, I come around, my role changes from teacher to coach, and I just really, they are self-paced, they are on their own computers with their partner, and they're going through each day, and when it comes up to something they need from me, Ms. Petchers, I need something printed off, Ms. Petchers, you know, how can you set this up for us? And they just do, and we roll with it.
That is amazing.
Yeah.
That is amazing. So how do, Mr. Petchers, how do you do that? How do you, do you actually show them how to draw the blood? You know all of those crafts?
They show me. They are, they have, Paxton Patterson has a great setup where the kids are allowed to be independent, they can listen to the information, so some kids who may be struggling with reading comprehension, there's a lot with like me, if I see a lot of words on a screen, it's like ants on a page, and so using headphones to listen to the information, and they'll tell Ms. Petchers, we need to, you know, set the dog up for CPR, they also do, we had 6th grade, I'm sorry, middle school principals in today, and we set up, and they drew blood from the dog's arm as well, and they're using real-world materials. And by I say real-world, I mean the dentistry, right, it's all, they're having, just like you'd have at a dentist office in a visit, their scraping plaque, you know that sound of a scraping plaque? Yeah, you hear that, oh gosh, but it's been a great program, and it really is, it feels good for us to lead the way, and Mr. Patane told us, you know, last year he asked me about it, and I said I'm on board, and with our administration now, with Heather and Jared and Rachel, they've been completely supportive throughout the whole process.
Amazing, they've had an impact, that looks amazing.
These guys are great.
I just wanted to say that I got to go visit your classroom, you guys were not in there when I was in there, but Principal Just took me to your class, and I got to see all the different things you could do, and I just think it was so amazing, like if I was a student, I would love to be in there, just because you have all these different things to pick from, and like you guys were saying, that helps you decide like at a young age what you want to do, and I loved how, I forget your name, with number 76, yes, Nai Lonnie? Okay, I loved how you said like you tried one thing and you thought that's what you would like, but then you changed your mind and you went a different way, and I think that's so important, and that's why it's such a great program, so I think this is one of the things that sets your schools, your middle schools apart from the other schools, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Excellent, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Board, just a quick...
Learn how to do CPR on the animal, I'd like to learn that.
One real quick comment, a couple of years ago I did a say, we need to do something about this, and Mr. Patane was the very first person to raise his hand, saying, I will, we will go first. And so it's taken us a little while to both identify what that elective wheel would look like, and find other schools nearby who are doing something similar, and to get this up and going. But as Mr. Petchers today, this is expanding to our other middle schools, so this soon will be at our other three elementary, middle schools, so we have more students taking advantage of these experiences, so.
All right, excellent. Dogs will be safe all across Marietta. I'd like to call on Marietta Valley High School Student Representative Megan Lewis.
I'll actually get us started, Stephen Deep House Principal for Marietta Valley High School, you guys can come on up. That's a great segue to our program that we're presenting tonight, because the more that they get exposed to these career tech pathways in middle school, they'll have more opportunity to make choices when they come to high school. So tonight's my privilege to introduce our Marietta Valley High School's Program of Distinction Virtual Enterprise. This is part of our career technical education offerings, and it represents one of the eight CTE pathways available to our students at Marietta Valley High School. Virtual Enterprise provides direct hands-on experience that prepares students for success in the business world and beyond. Through this pathway, students gain valuable skills in entrepreneurship, marketing, finance, and management while engaging in authentic business simulations. They also have the opportunity to connect with colleges and industry professionals during competitions and trade shows, building networks that support their future goals. This award-winning program competes annually in multiple business competitions and trade shows across Southern California, as well as the state championships in Bakersfield. Our ultimate goal each year is to qualify for the national competition in New York City, showcasing the incredible talent and dedication of our students on the national stage. Tonight, I'm honored to be present with Mr. Fox LaHica, our student advisor and teacher for the course, and our students that are going to explain and give you a better insight into what Virtual Enterprise is all about, thank you.
Good morning, good members, Dr. Andrus, good evening. My name is Fox LaHica, I have this blessing to be the entrepreneurship teacher at Marietta Valley High School. This is a course aimed at training the next generation of entrepreneurs and innovators. So I have present here a few of my students, and they will be sharing their ideas, what they do in the class, and what they plan to do in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, everyone, thank you for having us here.
Hi, guys, my name is Vaughn Kamen, I am the CEO of our Dermalize, which is one of the two businesses in VE. So what we learn here in Virtual Enterprise is through, basically it's all hands-on experience. So we are doing everything, we're conducting market research, we're developing business plans and annual reports, navigating financial market dynamics, this is like the break-even analysis, we have to pay our employees, so every month we have to actually do payroll for our employees, we have to actually go out and do an Adam Network contract to gain $150,000, where we can use this money to allocate it for our employees. You want to continue? So, you want to go first?
So our day-to-day class looks like managing day-to-day operations as simple as just running a business, and we have developed an entrepreneurial mindset, and we get to identify pathways and curves, like paths that align with our future interests and talents. And I'm Megan Lewis, and I am the Chief Executive Officer at Bella Room, one of our other businesses. Oh, and this year we have two firms, like Vaughn said, he is the CEO of Dermalize, and I'm the CEO of Bella Room, we both have very different business ideas and business plans, and we're very excited to share. to share.
Hi, I'm Sebastian, the COO at Velo Room, and so our business tackles a pursuing issue, which is millions of drivers who operate vehicles lacking modern safety and comfort features, especially for young drivers when they drive older vehicles that don't have the luxuries that newer vehicles have. And so that's basically what our company is trying to fix. So things like long commutes, physical fatigue, and vulnerability, and accidents are common challenges in younger drivers, and our solution is a smart modular car seat cover that transforms older and budget-friendly vehicles into safer, more comfortable rides. It bridges the gap between affordability and innovation, giving drivers a practical way to upgrade without replacing their car.
All righty, so, basically at Dermalize, our business addresses the major challenge that millions of skincare users are facing daily when it comes to trying to find the right skincare product for their unique skin, because the problem today is that a lot of these skincare companies are marketing their skincare products as a one-size-fits-all, when in reality, your skin is different from the person sitting next to you. So basically, at Dermalize, we solve this problem by combining biometric face scanning mixed with AI-powered diagnostics to really identify each user's exact skin needs and skin conditions.
Hello, everyone. I'm Elizabeth Krampa, CMO of Dermalize. Um, a little bit about our technology. So within minutes, our technology actually analyzes your skin tone, type, texture, hydration levels, and micro textures before recommending personalized skincare routines and curated product packages delivered right to your door.
What does MO stand for?
Chief Marketing Officer.
Okay, thank you.
So for VE, we actually do compete with a lot of the schools from around the county and around California, so we have a lot of different competitions. Last Friday, we attended the VE Trade Show in Tustin, Orange County, where Dermalize actually took home first place for the elevator pitch, which is out of four of these schools. Thank you. Our next challenge is an Inland Empire Business Plan Competition, so this is one of our like major business plans that will kind of move us on to the nationals if we do make it in the top 10, which we hopefully plan on doing, and that's on December 3rd.
Let's go.
I feel like I'm on Shark Tank. This is great. You're doing amazing.
Call to action. So we do need the support of our communities, school district, and local businesses to continue to help us learn, compete, and win. Together, we can empower students and the next generation to become entrepreneurs. Thank you, guys.
How long have you had this class for? Has this been a, how long has this been going on for?
Well, uh, Virtual Enterprise has been here for 16 years. Uh, myself, this is my third year doing this. I took over when Mr. Levin retired. Uh, so we have achieved some success in the past. Uh, for the last two years, we took the number one in the state for the elevator pitch. Uh, so we compete with over 120 schools statewide, and we were the number one. So that means our teams are very competitive, they work hard, these kids are trained, they took the first class of entrepreneurship, where they learned how to design a business model, and iterate, do customers, customer discovery, tested the prototype, and validated before they can build the real thing they can sell. The second class they take is a business management, marketing, and finance. They learn how to do QuickBooks, they certify in QuickBooks as professionals, and that's what we do. And when they get in a virtual enterprise, they start their own business like any other company. I stopped being a teacher, I become a coach, I'm sitting in the background, they do everything. They come up with the product, and they go through job interviews, some of you have interviewed them for the positions they are in right now. So now they are running the company. We have CEOs, CMOs, CFOs, human resources, they do their paycheck, they pay taxes, everything is virtual. The one challenge we face is that the community is not prepared for what we are doing. We just had a an experience with one company. We went to talk to them, for them to just listen to our student and sign a contract with them, a partnership agreement with them. They look at the legal document the student prepared, they panic. They go online, they check the website these kids have designed, they say, no, this is legitimate, I don't want to lose my job, because it feels and it looks and it is real, but it's only virtual.
Wow.
So we are trying to take our kids closer to the reality, to the real world as possible, while doing things with virtual tools. And that's why we need the involvement of our community, that when kids go to them, especially the businesses, they know that this is not a real business, not a real contract, but it's just to help kids with their school assignment. I think our CTE coordinator is doing a good job connecting us with local businesses, and they believe that that will make a big difference. And thank you so much for your support and everything you do for us.
Wonderful job.
Absolutely.
Oh, go ahead, Nick.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, entrepreneurship is the engine of our, of capitalism in our country, and it's just so great to know that you're instilling that kind of hard work, that innovation. Um, it's amazing. Really proud of what you guys do, and I had the chance to visit your classrooms, and I'm really, really impressed. So, and thank you for overseeing these wonderful young people.
I would just like to hire the company, is it Velo Room? For my long commute to Marino Valley, because I could definitely use that, and then also for the Dermalize, I would like to-
Sign up.
-hire you, have you provide me with some skincare products for wrinkles and things like that. So if you could work on that, that'd be great. And then Megan, I just want to say like, it's great to see you again. Welcome back.
And by the way, Dermalize just signed the partnership with Murrieta Hot Springs Spa.
What?
Yeah.
That is amazing.
And this is about half a million dollars, something like that.
Let's go.
Congratulations.
That's amazing. Well done. Awesome. I want to come see that. That's awesome. Thank you.
Yep, thank you guys so much. You did a wonderful job. Thank you. All right, item D3 is public comments. At this time, the governing board welcomes public comments. Individuals wishing to address the board are requested to complete a request to address the Board of Education card located at the entrance of the boardroom and submit it to the executive assistants. In accordance with Board Bylaw 9323, individual speakers shall be allowed up to three minutes to address the board on each agenda or non-agenda item. The board shall limit the total time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. Board shall take no action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda except as authorized by law. So first up, we have Kelly Parsons, followed by Bob Cowell.
Good evening, Board. I have four exciting things to share with you. Um, I wanted to shout out Lisa J. Miles for two different things. Uh, my twins are fourth graders over there, Mrs. Briggs, we've seen each other at a couple of the fun activities. Their PTA hosted a fun run, and I know many of our elementary schools have also hosted fun runs. Uh, the PTA and the teachers and administrators were able to raise over $70,000 for Lisa J. Miles. And so I just want to shout out the incredible skills and talents of those individuals. That PTA is amazing. If you don't follow them on Instagram, you definitely should. Shout out to our Monarchs. The other thing that I thought was really exciting and new is I went to my parent-teacher conferences for my twins, and on the elementary, I'm not sure if this is true for all, it's all elementary schools, um, a portion of their progress report reflects their, their work towards profile of a graduate, and that I thought was so, so wonderful as a parent to see how my fourth graders are presenting, or you know, progressing towards profile of a graduate. So parents, if you are listening, please take a moment to look at that, because that is one of the core tenets of MVUSD, and as a high school teacher, it was so exciting to see that that kind of language was already happening in the elementary level, and I'm excited to see that they'll have that language when they get to the middle school and go to that incredible careers class. Like, I kind of want to take that. Um, and so I, I was just so blown away, and I'm hoping that there's ways that I can, as a high school teacher, share how my students are working towards profile of a, profile of a graduate with their parents. Um, okay, the, number three. Uh, I went to a phenomenal avid training with many of my colleagues from Vista Murrieta, from Murrieta Valley, had some teachers there, I believe Mesa and all of the middle schools. It was a two-day training about avid strategies and how non-avid teachers can bring those into the traditional classroom. Um, I got so many good ideas about how to bring better note-taking skills, and I was able to have those actionable items and put them in place the next day. It was really, really amazing. I hope that that continues because it was phenomenal. Okay, 30 seconds. Okay, I'm gonna try not to get teary-eyed. Um, we know that this season is all about giving back, and I wanted to shout out Vista Murrieta High School. Their Senate program today turned in 8,800 cans to our local food bank.
Wow.
And I am so honored that my link crew leaders were able to bring in over 4,000 cans. They went trick-or-treating in the neighborhood, so if you saw kids in bright blue shirts and asked for cans and gave donations, thank you. Our community really showed up, and I am incredibly proud to be a Bronco today. Thank you.
That's awesome. Great.
Awesome, nice day. All right, we have Mr. Bob Cowell, followed by Jose Carreno.
Hi, Board. Um, I want to thank you on the board for putting Josephine Hartley on there. I think she'll be a great asset as being in the, in the Hispanic community, being able to speak Spanish. My wife was born in Mexico, by the way, and the first 12 years she, she grew up there. Um, and I think we have an Hispanic community in the backyard that loves you, right? So we're, we're all happy that you're on the board, and you can communicate with your Hispanic community, uh, which I love. I love the Hispanic culture. Um, I've been all over Mexico, um, well, except for Chiapas, a few other little places, but anyway, uh, I want to thank you. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jose Carreno, welcome.
Good evening, y'all. Good evening, Josefina.
Good evening.
So I have several things to talk about now on the agenda, so hopefully I get through all of them. Uh, first and foremost, I want to welcome and congratulate Josefina.
Thank you.
As Dr. Andrews said last time, felicidades y bienvenida.
Oh, gracias.
Before I say the rest of what I want to say about this subject, I want to make sure everybody understands that I could, I could care less about a person's skin color. Content of your character, you can't see it through skin, okay? But with that in mind, a few months ago, probably about six, seven months ago, a gentleman who usually, his group sits on this side of the fence, or this side of the room, he complained to you guys about not being representative of the community, not enough brown tones. So I'm sure that now that we have two persons who are not white, they'll join us on this side in welcoming you, supporting you, and rejoicing to see that reflection of the community. But I don't have too many high hopes that that's gonna happen, but I hope they will, because they got, that gentleman got what he asked for, okay? Representation. Uh, my second thing that I'm, oh, we're doing it on time. Um, months ago, I stood here and I asked the board to try to make it easier for parents to attend the meeting, several months ago. So I'm sure you're working on it really hard, so I'd like to gently suggest that maybe you allow speaker cards to be accepted after the high school does their presentation. Now, today, they're not doing it, maybe, maybe it's out of the way, so disregard what I'm saying, but you know, some of us are pulling the wagon, we're not on the wagon, so we have to work. Parents certainly have to work, they have kids, games, and so forth, so if you can make it a little easier for them to use their time wisely, that'd be great. Uh, one of, one of the few last things I want to talk about is I want to thank former trustee Julie Vandegrift for her role in preventing an apparently now unneeded bond. Uh, the, the people who were very polished that did the consulting work, I was mesmerized and very impressed by their language skills and their presentation and grasp on numbers. I was going for it, but I don't know what happened to those, that presentation, because now I understand that we have a declining enrollment. So thanks to her, my tax bill is not gonna go up that high, because I'm already struggling, because my house insurance went up like this dramatically. So, thank you, Julie. And the last thing I want to say in my 10 seconds is I was very disappointed in the behavior of some folks on this side of the room to Mr. Sanchez. Fortunately, that wasn't me that was being booed, because you would have to get those two cops to get me out of here, because nobody's gonna take away my First Amendment's right to speak like they did to him. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that concludes the public comments. Employee Organization reports, item D4, calling Lisa Murray, President of Murrieta Educators Association.
There we go. Good evening, Dr. Andrews and trustees. Before I start my report, I just want to remind everybody that these amazing programs that we have in this district could not happen without the amazing educators that lead them. So Mrs. Morande for Coal Canyon Choir, Mr. Petchers from McIlhany, and Mr. LaJica from MV, we thank you, because these programs would not be possible without the leadership of these amazing educators. Okay, back to my report. Tonight, my report will focus on a truly historic milestone, the upcoming 50th anniversary of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, a law that fundamentally reshaped what it means to provide a free, appropriate, and inclusive education to every child in this nation. For half a century, IDEA has stood as a promise that disability will never be a barrier to learning, dignity, opportunity, or belonging. Before IDEA, too many children with disabilities were excluded from classrooms, denied services, or separated from the communities that should have embraced them. Today, because of this landmark law, and because of the outstanding educators who breathe life into them, into it, excuse me, millions of students learn in environments where they are challenged, supported, and seen for their full potential. And so every day, but especially this year on December 2nd, we will celebrate the educators who make this promise real. To every special education teacher, paraprofessional, adaptive PE teacher, speech therapist, psychologist, nurse, service provider, and general education teacher who supports students with IEPs, you are the beating heart of IDEA's legacy. You redesign lessons, reimagine instruction, advocate tirelessly, communicate with families, and create learning environments where students' strengths are amplified and their needs are honored. You model patience, creativity, flexibility, and fierce belief in your students every single day. Our schools, our association, and our society are stronger because of you. But let's also be clear, the next 50 years of IDEA must look different from the last, because while IDEA is a promise, it is a promise that has never been fully funded. For decades, educators have stretched limited resources, pushed systems beyond their capacity, and done more with less than any of us should ever accept. Students deserve fully-staffed classrooms, they deserve timely evaluations on services, expanded mental health and behavior supports, and access to modern technologies and interventions. Educators deserve manageable caseloads, protected time, and the professional development required to meet increasingly complex needs. We cannot celebrate IDEA's anniversary without also confronting the urgency of this moment. If we want to honor the spirit of IDEA, then we also need full federal funding, not 15%, not 20%, but the 40% commitment made when IDEA was signed, comprehensive services that allow students with disabilities to thrive academically, socially, and emotionally, increased staffing to reduce burnout, attrition, and unsustainable caseloads, equitable access to technology, curriculum, early intervention, inclusive practices, and community-based support, respect and compensation that reflect the expertise and dedication of the professionals delivering these services. As we celebrate 50 years of IDEA, we thank our members for their courage, compassion, and unshakable dedication to educating our neediest students, transforming lives, and shaping futures. Together with the Inland Empire Coalition for Scholar Success, a collaboration of nearly 30 educators associations in Riverside and San Bernardino county, counties, we ask that on Tuesday, December 2nd, you help us honor our special educators and support staff, students with IEPs, and the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act by wearing a blue shirt and a yellow ribbon sticker, which I have included in the information packets I passed out to you, to your spots earlier this evening. I'd like to end by reading a resolution penned by the Inland Empire Coalition and endorsed by Murrieta Educators Association. A copy of this resolution is also in your packet. If I can get to it. Gotta love these. Okay, honoring IDEA's 50th anniversary and strengthening support for students with disabilities. Whereas 2025 marks the 50th anniversary of the Individual- Whereas 2025 marks the 50th anniversary of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, a landmark civil rights law that guarantees students with disabilities the right to a free and appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment. Whereas this anniversary honors not only the law itself, but the skilled labor of special education teachers, specialists, general education teachers, and support staff whose daily expertise makes IDEA's promise real for students. Whereas students with disabilities are valued members of every school community, and inclusive schools strengthen academic, social, and emotional outcomes for all students when the appropriate supports are in place. Whereas IDEA's full vision remains unfinished without equitable resources, sufficient staffing, and meaningful accountability, ensuring every student has the opportunity to learn, grow, and flourish. Whereas the federal government has pledged to fund 40% of special education costs, yet has never honored this commitment, resulting in increased caseloads, overwhelming workloads, compressed timelines, and service delivery challenges that weaken IDEA's intent. Whereas the educators who support students with IEPs face substantial emotional and physical demands, including intensive documentation, collaboration, and specialized preparation, often without the time, staffing, or compensation such work requires. Whereas improving educational outcomes for students with disabilities requires improving educator working conditions, including manageable caseloads, protected assessment time, meaningful collaboration opportunities, and high-quality professional development. Whereas local school districts play a critical role in IDEA implementation and must commit to the staffing, training, and support systems necessary to provide ethical, effective, and legally compliant special education services. Be it resolved that the Inland Empire Coalition for Scholar Success and the Murrieta Educators Association commemorate IDEA's 50th anniversary by affirming its values, celebrating the educators who uphold them, and calling for sustained investment and accountability to ensure students with disabilities receive the support they deserve. Be it further resolved that members are encouraged to take collective action through community engagement, legislative advocacy, and coalition building to help secure full federal funding and strengthen IDEA for the next 50 years. And that's all I have. Thank you. I love those resolutions with all those whereas's. Thank you.
Thank you for the visual, Ms. Murray. This is fantastic. And the little ribbon. I'll be in Sacramento for CSBA.
And I have a whole bunch more. If any of my district office people want some here for Tuesday, December 2nd.
That's great. Thank you.
All right. So Superintendent, Dr. Ward-Andrus.
Thank you, President Pardew. I appreciate the time just to give a couple of quick reports. Again, welcome trustee Hartley to the board. This is your first regular board meeting, but you've jumped into the work right away. I mean, they appointed you, and you didn't get a chance to even sit down. And so you took the oath of office and took your seat so that you could adjourn the meeting. And so appreciate your willingness to jump into the work. We've seen you at different meetings already and jumping right into the facilities work. So again, welcome to the board and the seat that you're filling. There is a bit of, we'll say, discussion online about the filling of the vacancy. And so I'm gonna provide a little information and put it on record so people can refer to some factual information. Let's just be honest, not everything that's posted on social media is true. So I want to share some information about where we are in the process. So the board took action on October 28th to appoint trustee Josephine Hartley to the vacancy. And that is considered a provisional appointment for 30 days. All right, it's called a provisional appointment for 30 days. After those 30 days, if nothing happens, then that becomes a permanent appointment. Well, excuse me, appointment to fill the vacancy until the next election, which would be November of 2026. However, there is an opportunity. The community may choose to seek a petition to still call for a special election. So, and we are required as a district to communicate the process, not to advocate for or against, but simply to communicate. So we sent a message to the parent community of Altamurrieta Elementary School, Rail Ranch Elementary School, Vista Murrieta High School Cabinet and Board. That represents Area 3. And so this is what we said in the message. Quote, "Unless a petition calling for a special election pursuant to Education Code 5091 is filed with Riverside County Superintendent of Schools within 30 days of this provisional appointment, Mrs. Hartley's appointment will become effective. Regardless of a petition filling, Ms. Hartley assumes all powers, duties, and governing board immediately following her appointment." And that was sent on October 29th. "I nor the district made any request for a petition to occur. I nor the district are permitted to take part in any of that process. Our duty is simply to communicate the statement, the one that I just read." If a petition occurs, then that is processed by the county superintendent of schools, Dr. Edwin Gomez, not here, not in this district, nor by me. If in the required timeline, there is 1.5% of the registered voters in trustee Area 3 that successfully petitioned for a special election, then the county superintendent will declare a special election and make that declaration. It happens at the county level, not here. The board seat is then vacated, and the board returns to four members. The registrar of voters then determines the special election date, and that is between 88 and 120 days out in the future. The cost of the special election was quoted by the Riverside registrar of voters at $50,000. If a special election occurs in the spring of '26, then that successful candidate would serve until November of 2028. If the petition is unsuccessful, then trustee Hartley will serve out until November of 2026. And then there will be a special election in November of 2026, and that successful candidate will serve until November of 2028. Either way, there is only one special election and only one cost of $50,000. Okay, just to be clear. All right, but I needed to make that clear because there's some chatter in social media channels and confusion and conversations about what is happening. And again, our district is not involved in that process. That's a community effort if it's underway, and that is handled by the county superintendent of schools, not here. So we wait to see if whatever that happens transpires, and I will wait to hear from the county superintendent if something occurs. But on a different note, I want to make note of a couple of things. This week, as we know, was, well, last week, excuse me, last week was Veterans Day. The Field of Honor took place, special thanks to the Rotary Club of Murrieta and the City of Murrieta. It's an important part of our students' educational experience that our 5th graders get to walk through and see that. I see some students here who are doing an assignment, probably for a government class or a history class, right? Yep, I see some nods. You probably at one point in time, if you were a 5th grader in our district, walked through the Field of Honor. And so we know that's an important experience for young people, to learn what citizenship is and to come to understand patriotism and what that means. And it's unique. I tell you, it's unique. Our neighbors to the north, our neighbors to the south do not do that. They are also different students because they don't. I have been able to work in different districts up and down the state of California, and this is a special place, and this activity is one of those unique features that makes our community special. So thank you to everyone that makes that happen, even in the light drizzle on Friday. Ms. Murray and I were there. Or the rain, which, by the way, the flags are still up. If you're available tomorrow at noon, we hope they're dry. We could use some help taking them down. Excuse me, Wednesday. That's tomorrow. All right. Lastly, just some top-place finishes. Kudos to Vista Murrieta Marching Band. They've took first place in two Regional Bands of America contests. Murrieta Valley High School, their football program, they continue in the playoffs, hosting somebody on Friday, but they're still marching on. And also at Murrieta Valley, Matty Salmon is participating in the state, the state, not the section. She already probably won that, the state championship for golf. Fall plays are underway, and it's just a remarkable place to be. And I hope you just participate in the activities that we have for our students and our community. And this concludes my comments. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Now for board member reports, and I'd like to start with Ms. Young.
Okay, I'm having problems with my voice today, but I'm gonna make it through this. So I went to the State of the City address for Murrieta, and I thought it was really well-done. A lot of people came from surrounding cities, city councils, and school board trustees. I saw a lot of people I've met, gotten to know from other cities. I went to the Last Student of the Month breakfast. I want to congratulate Orly Weaver from Murrieta Mesa High School. He's up for valedictorian. He plays water polo and wants to go into nuclear energy or business. Okay, we also had Gavin Larson from MCA. He's a peer counselor, school board rep. We've seen him here many times on the superintendent's advisory council, and he coaches his brother's team, and I forgot what sport. He wants to get a BA in social science and psychology. From Murrieta Valley, we had Sophia Antion. She's the tennis team captain, wants to major in pre-med and gender studies and go into women's health. She wants to be a gynecologist. From Vista Murrieta, we had Austin Wright. After graduation, he wants to go into live entertainment production full-time. He's doing that now, part-time. And he's also in the marching band and plays the piano. I went to the joint fall meeting in San Bernardino, several, I think we all did. So it involves school boards and superintendents from both Riverside and San Bernardino counties. They talked about chronic absenteeism, which is slowly improving. There was a panel discussion, which I personally found quite interesting, especially the forensic physician. I hadn't ever had the opportunity to hear from a forensic physician before. He talked about, basically, educators are the number-one reporters of child abuse because abusers hide their abuse. I went to the district choir showcase. So all of the middle and high school students were involved in this, who are involved in choir. They all sounded great, much better than me right now, and were having fun. And they really encouraged the middle school kids to continue this on in high school. I went to the Veterans Day breakfast at Chevila. I'm from a military family myself. My father was a retired naval aviator, and I moved around a lot. Went to a lot of new schools, often in the middle of a year. So I can relate to these kids. And I think it's great that this district has this support system that didn't exist when I was at that age, not that I'm aware of. Anyway, I think it's great that this district does so much for our military families. Continuing on with that thought, I was heavily involved with the Field of Honor. I was there, I've been there virtually every day. I helped with flag sales. I also bought a flag for my father. I volunteered to be a docent. I volunteered at the lunch. I walked in the Veterans Day parade. I went to the candlelight service, and we were really lucky because the rain started right after it ended, because it was supposed to be raining earlier than that. So, and a nice thing is I did get to meet most of the 5th graders in the district, like I did last year. And anyway, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you very much. I will be the next to report. Murrieta Valley Football Plays Los Alamos on Friday. The Nighthawks are doing quite well. They just beat Rancho Cucamonga in a very excellent game. So we have a home game Friday. With that being said, I think coaches need a shout-out. We're in, right in the middle of all our sports seasons. All of our athletes are really competing and working hard as the winter sports are getting started and fall sports are wrapping up. And it's really just an exciting time to be in high school. And I love the atmosphere that I see at all of our games, at all three of our high schools' fielding sports teams. And one of the things I wanted to kind of point out, too, is just how important it is to have engagement with parents and that they are partners with us in the classroom and on sports fields. There are so many teachers and coaches that put themselves in what I call friction zones. So you're a teacher, you're holding a high academic standards, you're in a friction zone because you're trying to push a student, you're trying to hold a student accountable, and parents need to understand that. High school's a journey, and this is true, I think, school just generally is a journey. And having that partnership is so important to help students make good decisions as they find themselves in those conflict zones, right? So when we're playing a sport, sometimes the game doesn't go the way we hoped. Sometimes we don't get the playing time that we had hoped. There's all kinds of things that go on, and that creates friction. And then we have teachers that volunteer a lot of time to make sure these young people can field a team, to try to provide a positive experience for our young people. And I think it's important as parents that we be as supportive as we can be and make sure we meet the coaches, introduce ourselves, be supportive of the program as much as we possibly can. And that includes in the classroom. I think we've heard a lot of things that are going on with discipline issues over the last few months, and I think it's just so important that parents stay engaged. So I'm hopeful the parents listening, that you pay attention to what's happening, you be supportive of the teacher. I know, that's from my experience as a young person, I just know my parents would never do anything but support the teacher because they understood the moment there was a gap that there's opportunity for all kinds of mayhem. And so they need to be lockstep in supporting that authority figure in the classroom or on the athletic field. And I think it's just such an important thing that we do as a community and try to come together and support our teachers in the classroom and our coaches. With that being said, there's been a couple articles out hitting on some things that really matter to me. I really care about excellence in the classroom. It's been something that I've been promoting ever since I've been on the board. I am an economics teacher, also been a coach, go figure. And one of my biggest concerns is math scores, and we're focusing this year on math scores. One of the things that I've always harped on was, I don't like graduation rates because that doesn't really tell us what the skill set is that the students have. And so I'd rather focus on the skills because it doesn't help that we were A-through-G compliant, but then we can't really compete when we get to the higher-level education at, say, UC San Diego, which was in the news just recently about how 20%, 25% of kids were really struggling with basic math. And we need to really think about that as a district. That's not to say that that's our students. Our students probably did great on that same question. But I think it's important that we're focusing on the skill set so that they are prepared to be successful when they graduate. Sometimes we push so hard to get to those advanced levels, we don't always follow through on those basic, fundamental math problems so that when they get into an economics class, they're adept with percentages. I just can tell you, as a teacher and being married to a science teacher in the district, there are a number of students that struggle with fractions and percentages and some of the basics, or setting up a graph. And we don't want to miss those. We want to make sure the writing skills and the math skills are where they need to be as they move from one level to the next. Because I've seen papers written by high school students that are questionable at best, right? We want them to be writing and prepared to write at a college level, right? And that includes their ability to sign an autograph because they're gonna be famous one day, and they gotta write and sign a great signature, all right? So I think that's really important. The other one is AI problems, and as a teacher, I can tell you that AI, and it's not just AI, I call them homework-doers. Kids that do their homework, but they don't know what the homework was about because they copied someone else's homework or they got a picture of someone's work, and they're not really putting their time and energy into learning the material. They sit in a classroom and kind of want to just, as a sponge, whatever the teacher puts out, that's my learning time, when in reality, they need to be at home reading, studying, and making sure when they do a homework assignment, they're attempting to learn and understand the material. And if they have questions about their homework, they go to their teacher and ask those questions. I think those kinds of processes are things we need to be engaged in, and we need to be having that conversation. Additionally, very concerned about Murrieta Valley graduation robes. I'm just gonna tell you, we need to support excellence. I don't like the idea that we're gonna promote mediocrity and everyone's in the same robe. If we're doing a great job, we want to recognize those kids that are hitting those marks. I'm also very concerned that I'm hearing that middle school classrooms no longer have advanced courses. I think that's a travesty. We want to encourage kids to reach their highest potential and make sure that we challenge them to be the very best that they can be, and whatever that means. So we need to continue to have that dialogue. I'd love for those opportunities to be had with the board and to be engaging, obviously, with the district office and teachers to discuss those issues. So I'm working very hard at that. And last, but not least, my favorite transitional math, math 1, math 2, math 3. I'm a traditionalist. I am very concerned that we are not getting the algebra, algebra 1, algebra 2, geometry, trig, calculus. Even the colleges will have trouble matriculating our students as they move forward. We want to know where our students are, where their weaknesses are, and we need to at least reevaluate a little bit and have that conversation. Is this the best path forward? With that ends my report. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. And Mrs. Briggs.
So is that like a topic you put on conversation? How does that work?
We will add this to the agenda, make sure we bring some teachers in.
I'll put it on my little list here.
Find ways to do that, thank you.
Okay.
Mrs. Diaz will be contacting you because Ed Services has a math conversation queued up to have with board members before we come to a public meeting.
Okay.
Well, and I would just like to add, since you did ask. I really want the public engaged and the teachers engaged in this conversation. If I'm having a conversation with district office administrators, that's not very helpful for the community to know what we're doing as a board, importantly. And also, some of the issues that we have and the challenges, especially in this AI world with students learning. We want to know that the students are learning and that we're challenging them, and that we're hearing what the teachers' challenges are as well, within that environment.
All right, thank you, Nick. I want to start off with shout-out. Nick was mentioning coaches. And last night, my son goes on an accident in the field at Vista because he's a sports player. They handled it, I mean, it was perfect. I was so thankful for them. You know, he ended up only with a little splint and a rap, but they were very genuinely invested in his welfare. So shout-out to Coach Darstad and team. I was very grateful, as a mom, getting called to the field for an injury at, like, I think it was 8 o'clock at night. And so I just wanted to shout them out because Vista has a great sports program and they have very attentive coaches. So to that point, we want to support them. Went to State of the City, State of the District, all these veterans' breakfasts. We saw the kids singing and doing all these things. But specifically at Chevila and Dorothy McElhaney. I heard their choirs at the same event that Ms. Young was at. And let me tell you, I was so impressed with this choir. I told them, I'm like stalking them now because I've been to three choir events, and these kids are talented beyond talented. But specifically at Chevila, from what I understand, Ms. Michelle has taken that program from three kids to over 40. And it was phenomenal. So my request to Dr. Andres, just so the teachers are watching, is they've requested to come sing before the board, and I've put that officially in, and so hopefully we can get you guys dialed in. Because you guys will just be blown away at the talent. We went to the, did an MEA meeting with Mrs. Murray and two of her colleagues. And listen, I know we don't always agree, I'm fully aware, and I started that meeting off with that. But my goal is to work on the things that we can work on with our MEA and us as a board. So that was on the docket this past month. And then one of the things I wanted to say was, I went to my very first LPAC meeting, and it was the Latino Parent Advisory Council. And I'd never been to one before, but I have to tell you, I was very grateful. My colleague was with me at that meeting, and Karine and Denora and Tamara Dewey did a fabulous job. I've been to a couple advisory council meetings, and no offense to anybody else's, theirs was super fun. And it was great, super engaging. They were able to help some of the parents that came. They had questions about their absenteeism and all that fun stuff. It was extremely informative, and I could see faith where that team really connects with the community. And so Josephine was able to help me translate. I am working on Duolingo, but I'm not quite there yet. So Josephine's going to have to be with me for that for a little bit. And then just my last thing I wanted to point out, I mean, there's a ton. We have the opportunity, as board members, to go to so many events because with 21,000 kids across the district and events at every school site, there's lots of opportunities. And Dr. Andres ties to get to as many as he can. We, as board members, try to get there as much as we can. So we can't possibly list all of the things. But today, we did a facilities meeting, and I just wanted to say thank you to Darren and Jose. We're working on the facilities master plan for our district. And I know some parents, even some of our community members, may not know what that is. But I can tell you, it's a lot of W-O-R-K. They've been meeting with sites for the last couple months here, and the work that they're putting out and the data that they're giving us is really great feedback. So just shout-out to Darren and Jose and their teams. And I'm very grateful, as we learned the process of this facilities master plan, that they really are leading the team in how to do that and how to facilitate it. So I'm thankful. That concludes my report.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Okay, good evening. First of all, I just want to say, great job Coal Canyon Choir. That was amazing, and those kids are really talented, especially that lead singer. She reminded me of like Annie, musical Annie or something. That was really great. And for the teacher, the choir director as well. And so I was going to start out by congratulating some of our schools, but the same thing that Dr. Andres wrote, I wrote. I didn't copy him, I didn't get together with him, but it's going to sound kind of pretty much the same. So I apologize.
You should say it.
So I'm still going to say it because I had written it all up, but I was like, oh my gosh, it's the same exact thing. But ditto, right? Okay, so Vista Marietta Marching Band, under the direction of Mr. Wade and Mr. Idell? Do you say Idell or Idol? It's I-D-E-L-L. So sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name. They are the champions of America for the marching bands, so great job. We're super proud of you. Also, as we learned tonight, Dorothy McElhaney was recognized as a Blue Ribbon School, so congratulations to them. And again, Altamirrieta for their outstanding academic growth. That's just something to be really proud of. And I just want to ask them, please share it with everyone else, what you did. Share it with the other sites, like, we need to replicate that. Also, to Maddie Salmon and Coach Gallegos from Vista Marietta. It was brought to our attention that Maddie is the first girls' golfer from Vista Marietta. Is she the first girl golfer from? Oh, Murita Valley. I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry, I'm sorry, Maddie. So congratulations, though, for qualifying for state. So it was told to us that she is the first girls' golfer from there. So good luck, and we are rooting for you. Make us proud. Also, I would like to address a few other items. First, I would like to address public comments that are continually made here by the same people, meeting after meeting. This meeting, surprisingly, now that I'm going to mention it, it was not mentioned, but this is one of the only ones, I believe, since I've been on the board, that the board is wasting and spending money and not acting fiscally responsible. They come up here every time and say that we're not being fiscally responsible and we're spending money. So because of that, I dug into this and contacted Dr. Andres and James Whittington. So I'm going to give you the facts, and you guys can, James, is he here? Oh, there he is. James and Dr. Andres, if I misspeak, then please correct me. But other than a contract for an outside consultant to analyze our math data and courses, we have not added any significant expenditure. Is that correct? Okay, I just want to say this publicly because it's very tiring to get told the same thing, basically unfactual information, meeting after meeting, and it's not true. So I just wanted to clear up some things. And also, the Bob Tyler Law Firm was not doing any work for the district until last week, or maybe it was the week before. He began working on a legal question at a small cost. And the Bob Tyler Law Firm is working on it because our other district lawyer helped develop the policy that was having the legal question. So Dr. Andres had told me, we do not anticipate going beyond our budgeted amount. So I would appreciate, if those people who are always saying that the board is wasting the district's money, please stop. Stop trying to create a false narrative and create fear. Again, as I said before, just because you say something, it doesn't make it true. Speaking of these same people coming to meetings and talking about how the district is spending money, the district is now being investigated over our BP 5010 that we passed. People that complain about the district's spending are the ones that are causing the district to spend money by trying to bring forth lawsuits that go against what the parents want. In addition to this investigation, there's now a petition going around that Dr. Andres spoke to, so thank you for speaking to that, to call out for a special election for the board vacancy we just filled at our last board meeting. I checked into this as well, and Dr. Andres stated that especially, well, he already gave you all the information. I don't want to go into that. But it would cost the district $50,000 per the registrar of voters. So those are the facts. So all of these other things that the same group of people continue to come say are, it's a false narrative. These are the same people that come, again, that come up here and speak about spending money, and they tried to collect signatures to go to an election and spend $50,000. Which I was like, help me, explain this to me like I'm five. Because I'm not really understanding this. Because of this, I guess there was a Facebook post going around, and I don't even have it. I got it sent to me by members of the community because I'm not on there to see this. But this was going around, and it says, and I'm reading from it, "If you received a text from the district about a possible petition, you could be eligible to sign and have your voice heard." And they were meeting at a park this past, in the rain. And so they made it sound like this was a directive from the district to sign this petition. So I immediately emailed Dr. Andres. I'm just trying to be transparent so you guys can see what goes on. I emailed him and asked him, is this something that the district put out to encourage the public? Because this is what this Facebook post, that they say they're for Marietta schools, but I really question that, that they were putting out there. Because if you're just reading it, you would think, oh, yes, this says Marietta schools. Oh, they're for the schools. Oh, it said if you got a text message from the district. So I asked Dr. Andres, did the district send out this text message asking for this? And I got clarification, because my thing was, and I'll just read it to you. "Why is there a text from the district to the community about having their voice heard in a possible special election for the board position that we just filled? We spent more than six hours listening to 12 candidates to appoint a new board member. We saved the district $50,000." I would think that is, is that not correct? Dr. Andres said it said $50,000 for special election.
Audience members, this isn't your time to engage. Just to be very clear, because I stated once before, if there is a successful petition now, the provisional appointment would end, and there would be a cost of $50,000 for a special election, but it's only one time. So if it happens now in the spring of 2026 or November of 2026, there's only one cost.
So, if I may continue, thank you. And what a waste of time that would have been for those 12 candidates, who, they were all very qualified. They were. And so they had to take time to prepare, to come here and interview in front of everybody. And then people are putting this out on Facebook that, oh, no, the district gave us our directions to come and sign this petition. And they took it at the, so I asked for, what was the communication to the parents? So here it is. It was a parent square, and this was fine. It was saying how the Board of Education vacancy for trustee area applications is open. So they took one line at the very end of this long parent square, and it was just, it says, unless a petition calling for special election pursuant to Education Code 5091 is filed with the Riverside County Superintendent of Schools within 30 days, da-da-da-da-da. Basically, one line. So it was not a direction from the district. It was a requirement by the law to announce a provisional appointment in the process. They didn't want to put the other page and a half of information talking about how to apply and that Josephine Hartley was appointed, and she has been a member of this community for 37 years, and she's a parent of Murita Mesa alumni. They didn't want to put any of that. But what they wanted to put on social media was that it was announced that the parents received a text from the district about a possible petition disregarding all of this other information. So this was a sneaky way to mislead the community. And it's disingenuous, and it's basically people throwing a fit because they're not getting their way. Because I guarantee you, if it was the other way and they had appointed someone that they thought was qualified in their mind, this wouldn't be happening. So I'm just addressing this because I know on social media, we can post whatever we want. But this is just a reminder to remember that not everything on social media is true. And not everything people come up here and speak about is true. They're not facts. So I'm going to ask you politely, to these people that are doing this, please stop. Please stop it. You want to come up here with facts, fine. But if you continue to come up here and say things that aren't true, I, at least, will continue to get information to see if that is correct or not. Because at first, I thought this Facebook post was, I thought it was true. I mean, because I didn't know, I'm not on Facebook, I don't see that. And so I'm glad that Dr. Andres was able to explain the situation. And I hope this clarifies to the public that the board is not spending money. It is the people who aren't getting their way and are upset and causing chaos and creating false narratives and coming up here and spreading disinformation that is causing the district to spend money. And that is money that could go to students and/or teachers. So please stop. Thank you. That concludes my report.
All right, good evening. So on October 30th, just a couple days after I was sworn in, I had an orientation appointment with Julie Diaz. She's very efficient and polite. And followed by a welcome appointment with Dr. Andrews. Very informative, too much information. And I was given a tour of the district offices. Wow, yes. And on November 6th, I attended the Latino Parent Advisory Committee, and Mrs. Briggs was there. I met some parents and their children. They had educational activities and food, really good food. They discussed the cultural night at Vista, happening on December 11th, that I hope to attend. I told them I would. And thank you to Nora Mendoza Montoya, which she did a great job and made that meeting fun and informative. On November 12th, it was the Marietta Mesa Town Hall, and I got to hear about the needs of different schools, old portables, parking lots, and other construction projects. And it was good to be there, good memories from Mesa because my children graduated from Mesa. On November 13th, it was the candlelight ceremony at Field of Honor. It was a beautiful ceremony. I was there, and it was raining, yes. There were songs and very touching letters. And I am thankful for all who have served, including my husband and members from both sides of my family, Army, Marines, Coast Guard. And Gracias Ethan for serving. He said he would be here. I don't see him, he didn't make it. Ah, thank you, Gracias Ethan for serving, if he's watching. Thank you. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you very much. All right. We're going to move on to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are voted on collectively as a group. Upon board member request, items may be removed from the consent calendar for discussion and individual action. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar items E1 through E7 as presented?
So moved.
Well, I wanted to pull something, I don't know. I wanted to amend the approval of minutes. So do I pull that, or do I wait till we get to that part to amend it, ask for an amendment?
That'd be appropriate to ask that question now.
Now?
Yes, was there something in the minutes? Do you remember which date that was?
Okay, so this is from Sept., oh, gosh, I need these readers, Julie gave me, hold on. This is from September.
23rd?
23rd, is that when it is?
Or the 17th?
The 17th, the 17th. And it was number four. The last one about Mark Sanchez, the parent, do you see that, number four?
Yeah, I see it now.
It says, "Mark Sanchez spoke regarding a male student in the female locker room and was asked to stop his comment." I just think this should be amended to reflect the details of silencing that parent. Can I just make this, so do I make a suggestion?
For example, something around that there was a lot of talking over, et cetera, and the person ended?
Well, and with the reason that it was not, he was asked to stop by you, Dr. Andrews, with the reason that it was not related to the agenda item, which was about Title IX of Boys and Girls Spaces.
Yes, we can amend that.
Which makes, it does make it relevant to the agenda item.
Correct. I was, yeah, I was hoping he was going to get to that. Yes, we can certainly pull that set of minutes. Yes, we can certainly pull that set of minutes, approve all the other items, and then bring this one back.
Okay.
So that would be, okay. So is there a second? Because Mrs. Young.
I would second that.
You would second?
Oh.
There's a motion already.
Do I have to make a motion to amend it?
First of all, is there another second?
Okay.
There was not a second.
Okay. So make a motion.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to amend, to amend the minutes under public comment regarding meeting agenda items.
Yep, on September 17th. Item number four.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done. Motion carries.
Yeah.
Can you attach his letter too, Doc? I know you saw it in an email. Did you ever get a response?
He never sent it to me.
Okay.
If he would, and I would, because I sent him a message to that individual, asking him, and I never got it.
Thank you.
So now that, with that being pulled, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as?
Yes, without the September 17th?
Yep.
And we bring September 17th back?
Yep.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar with the September 17th meeting minutes being pulled for items E1 through E7 as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries, 5-0. Action item F1, selection of the annual organizational meeting date, time, and location. I call for a motion to hold the annual organizational meeting on December 16th, 2025 at 5:00 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries, 5-0. F2, approval of personnel report. Calls for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries, 5-0. F3, approval of revised substitute salary schedule, minimum wage increase. Calls for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries, 5-0. Item F4, learning update, number one presentation. I call on Mrs. Faith Munchnick Jackson.
What was the line from the Coal Canyon song? You went turkey? I don't know. We were joking over here that I was going to bring it back, but I'm not. So good evening, board members and to the Marietta community. My name is Faith Munchnick and I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. It's my pleasure to provide to you tonight a brief learning update. It's really a snapshot of our district-wide performance on a number of the key state indicators. And I'll be highlighting the outcomes from this year's data, which also will reflect our performance relative to county and state levels, as well as our progress over time. Just to preface this, as we look at our CASP results, it's really important to remember what this assessment is actually measuring. CASP isn't designed just to show grade level proficiency. It measures which students are on track for college and career readiness, which is a much higher bar, something we've been talking about tonight quite a bit. Performance levels three and four indicates students are performing at a college-ready level, meaning they should be able to take college-level courses without remediation. So even though percentages may look lower than what we might see in grades or in past assessments, they reflect a much more rigorous standard. So one that emphasizes critical thinking, reasoning, and problem solving. And we do see this pattern country, I'm sorry, countywide and statewide, I'm sorry, countrywide and statewide. Districts report lower percentages of students meeting standards because the bar reflects college readiness expectations rather than grade level mastery. So I just want to be sure that while our percentages might be lower than they have been for past assessments, this doesn't necessarily mean less learning, it just reflects a more rigorous measure. I'm going to start with our results for ELA, for CASP. Along the left, you'll see a table that has our historical scores and with the years missing during COVID. And then the last two rows are Riverside County results and California statewide results. And then on the right, you'll see a graph, and this is our, the county results. So it's just nice to see comparative how we did within the county. In English Language Arts, 63% of our Marietta Valley students met or exceeded standards. This is compared to 44% countywide and 49% statewide. This places us well above the county and state averages, and it reflects steady growth of the, over the past three years, from 58% in 2122 to now 63% in 2425. You'll note that we are just one percentage point away from where we were prior to the Turning to our math, CASP scores, 48% of students met or exceeded standards. This compares to 30% countywide and 37% statewide. Our results continue to outpace regional and state performance, and they also demonstrate consistent growth from 41% in 2122 now to 48% in 2425. Again, we are closing the gap to reach pre-pandemic achievement levels. And I've always appreciated, Dr. Andres, you've spoken at times, like, what does that mean for 1% more of our population to then be able to perform? And so we're talking multiple, right? 8% during that time, which it really is significant growth. Lastly here for CASP, it's actually CAST scores. I've listed it, it's Science CASP, it should be CAST is the name for the science test. 45% of students met or exceeded standards. This is compared to 27% countywide, 33% statewide. Again, strong and sustained improvement over three years, up nine points from 36% in 2122 to 45% in 2425. We are above pre-pandemic levels in science, interestingly, and we are one of the two top performing districts in the county in science.
I have to comment on the science scores. I don't know why.
Hmm.
But one of the things that I noticed that I'm kind of really impressed with is that the peach level, like you can see where, with each graph, you can kind of pay attention to that. And it happens to be in science that that, that's a very thin level right there at the bottom. That means most of our students, the vast majority of our students are up in the green area. And I think that's just a really cool element of looking at the data.
It is. And sometimes, I know, like, you know this as an educator, like, science, social studies get lost in, when we're working on the basics of math and ELAs. I think this is a major compliment, of course, to our science teachers.
Yeah.
As well as to the system overall. You know, we've recently adopted a science curriculum in elementary. I mean, there's a lot of work there.
Yeah, that's really small orange section. That's, that's the kids who are like far below.
Yeah.
But that, that kind of lime-ish green color, that's our kind of approach, like, they're almost there. And so back to the very first slide, like, like, they probably have a lot of the grade level skills they need. They may not be like that college-going set yet, but they're, this is significant, I think, for our science teachers and everyone teaching science and supporting science. Like, our, that's really making a difference for our kids, so, yeah. It's, we'd like to see more.
I thought that was an important data point to look at when we were looking at this, is that the RP, the peach level there at the very bottom is much thinner than most.
Yes, yeah. And you're going deeper into the data, which, I mean, I didn't try to prepare at that level, but I'm glad you did because that's where you see some of these nuances and, and that's an important one to point out.
Yeah. And I, well, I'm competitive, so I'm looking at Temecula Valley one.
Oh, me too.
And I'm like, looking at our bars and seeing where, where we're at. And so it's kind of, it's a cool to break that down.
We are so coming close to hitting them, and we did in science here.
That's good.
Oops. Okay. This is your favorite. I know this is your favorite, Mr. Pardino. I heard Eleanor say that.
This is Nick's right here. You just pointed out, Faith.
You do know that our rates remain among the highest in the county and state at 97.8%. Also, our A through G completion rates continue to rise, meaning that 62% of our graduates meet the coursework required for UC and CSU eligibility. The College and Career Indicator also is continuing to strengthen at a high rate, showing that more students are graduating at 64% with experiences that prepare them for multiple post-secondary options, so. And I know we do sometimes make light, and I understand your point, with the graduation rate, but I do want to credit our counselors. A lot of work goes into making sure that our kids do meet our graduation requirements.
Before we pass on this one, the CCI, which is our acronym for College and Career Readiness Indicator, is a newer metric. The state developed that even just before the pandemic. And that is a, it's a variety, this is for both the public and maybe our new board members, so this is a new measurement. It's a variety of ways in which students demonstrate college and career readiness. It's not just like the UC-going A to G courses. It might mean that they've completed a career pathway. It might mean they've completed taking, I think it's two college-level classes through dual enrollment, or AP, or IB. So there's a variety of ways that students demonstrate their college and career readiness.
CTE. I have the list here, the completion of A through G coursework with a grade of C or better, high scores on AP, IB, or dual enrollment college courses, CTE pathway completion, standards on state assessments, and then other things such as sealed by literacy and passing military aptitude assessments.
Right. So this is, you can see, about a, about a 10% increase in just two years' time. So that's great to see more of our students kind of being prepared in different ways, depending on which direction they're headed.
Yeah, one of the things too, I want to say it while we have some students in here, we need more teachers. I always try to push my students to become teachers because education, we need, you're, you're in the middle of the system, you can see the strengths and weaknesses. When I was young, there was all these people my age looking to coach, looking to teach, looking to get into. It wasn't a fallback. It was, I want to teach. I want to be involved in education, and I hope we get more people doing that. So when we look at career readiness, I hope we see it at all the high schools that we're trying to encourage teaching. That would be great.
We have that pathway, yeah.
Yeah, we have that pathway at two high schools, hoping to get MV on board soon.
Yeah. I know someone who'd love to help with that.
I have a question for you, Faith.
Yes.
And I remember, new to Ed, the Ed space, so I'm not in this world like Nick is and Christine perhaps, but, so the data is showing the high percentage of the graduation, and we're talking about that, but this, I see an increase. So when I first heard this presentation, I don't think I was sitting on the dais yet because, you know, I think I came at a meeting and you didn't. And I didn't quite understand it, but now that I'm kind of getting my footing, the percentages year over year have increased. And are we using COVID as like a benchmarker to say, hey, we've improved since COVID? And then what was it, is it fair to ask, what were we at pre-COVID and are we comparative?
So let's go back. So if I go back, let's just use the science one, right? So the 1819 where it says 39%, that is our pre-COVID score. And you'll see, are you asking first this data or were you asking specifically for what was on the other slide?
For what, just, I mean, for Marietta, like, I know it's comparing to the other counties, but.
But this is, see how that's 1819 at 39%? So that's where we were before the, before the pandemic. And then you see a couple of years skipped because we didn't have assessments during that time.
Or that just messed us all up, didn't it? That's terrible. Okay, go ahead, sorry.
No, that's okay. And so then you see, coming out, we were 3% below. You know what? This doesn't give as much of a math is going to show you even more. So we, in 1819, we were 52% were meeting standards. We skipped a couple of years of assessment due to the pandemic and we were at 41%. I mean, it was due to the nature of what happened and the effect on education and our kids' learning. And so we're slowly creeping back up. So when you see us at 48% now, we're just about closing that gap. ELA is closer, 1% away. And then interestingly, back to science, we are above where we had been prior. So yeah, I would say that pre-COVID is a marker for our achievement, but in addition to that, it's that steady increase. Like, that's what we're always seeing because it is a big deal when you have 20,000 kids and you're seeing 33%, 2, 3, 4% continually growing, that we're going in the right direction.
I know, it's like turning the Titanic. And I totally get it. I understand it's slow go, but how do we, how do we look at when we compare to state, like the nation, you know? I mean, how do we get those numbers up as compared to the nation, you know, the state, sorry? Well, nation too, I suppose, but state, like, let's start here.
I'm not sure exactly what you're asking me.
So we have these numbers here that were great in the county, like, number one in the county.
And the state, too.
So then, so let me take it to the state metrics then. From what I understand, and I guess I got to find the data, and I will, but is the data across, where does Califor, where do we stand?
Oh, so what you, what you can see, so let's look at this one, C2425 says 45%. Riverside County's average is 27% and California's average is 33. So we are 12 percentage points above the average in California. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I was not clear on that.
No, that's me. I'm learning, I'm learning your charge, Faith.
Are we getting liking that? And then ELA, again, we are at 63. The state of California average is 49. So 14 points above the state average. We are at 48 and the state average is 37, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. I think that's important to see that, so thank you. And I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear.
No, it was me, Faith. It's all me.
No, me, me. Okay. English language proficiency. Our performance on the LPAC remains strong overall with results that are at or above both county and state averages. The percent of English learner scoring at a Level Four, which means well-developed on the LPAC, is 22%. And again, statewide, the percent scoring well-developed is 16%. And within Riverside County, it's 14%. So we do exceed with that. And that, those are the students that are scoring at the highest level on the LPAC, which basically says that they are ready to be re-designated and, and as English speakers. And then the reclassification rate represents the percentage of English learner, English learner students who are reclassified as fluent English proficient within a given school year. Our reclassification rate has remained steady over time. It was very high in 1920, but since after pandemic, it's been pretty consistent at 16%.
Do you know if, for the reclassification rate, are we, do you know, in our district, like at elementary, are we actually like being very intentional and practicing? Because it's the writing that they don't do well in and like listening to the presentation and then summarizing it. Because I've had to do the LPAC tests for students. So are teachers taking time, like, at least weekly or monthly, or however they do it, to make sure they're practicing those strategies that they'll need to do with, with those students so they can reclassify?
Primarily in the.
Because that's not a very high number.
Yeah. I know it appears that way, but we're still, it is a strong number. We have a very high reclassification expectation. And when our kids do reclassify, they perform very well. They outperform our overall population. And so we do have designated ELD time within the elementary classrooms. And of course, those are the types of skills they're working on as well in middle and high school in the ALD class, when they're getting provided that individual support.
I was just wondering if they use the, because there are practice tests they can use to, are they using those as well to practice with the students? Because even though they have ELD time, they still need those extra on those specific, like, listening to presentations and retelling it.
Yes.
Because they have to learn how to take notes and they, I mean, I just went to a training on this, so I'm just, I'm just like asking if like our teachers are doing that, from what you know.
I believe so. I think it is probably happening stronger at the secondary level once we have students, because we get students that get kind of stuck at that level and just can't, at like a three and just can't get over that hump to be reclassified. And so that's a chance for them to do that. I have heard that they do practice tests and that they're attentive to the needs for those kids. But if you are interested in learning more, our coordinator Jill Bushhausen would be glad to talk to you more about the details of that. Okay. So lastly, this is our recently released California School Dashboard. As a reminder, and this is, I don't know how many of you are familiar with this, but the dashboard measures our achievement in various areas as well as our growth from the prior year. So each area, each color, and you can see the dashboard colors, is a combination of both achievement and growth from the prior year. Blue represents the highest level that you're hoping to get. And then red, of course, at the low end of the dashboard is an area for immediate attention. As you can see, our highest dashboard level is blue for graduation rate. Sorry to point that out again. But we are characterized as green for a number of areas. English Language Arts, Mathematics, the College Career Indicator and Suspension Rate are all green, which is excellent. Continued attention is needed for English learner progress, which is orange, and chronic absenteeism, which is yellow. Just a little detail on that. Our English learner progress indicator was affected by a slight decline of 3.5% in the number of students making progress towards language proficiency. We were like right over the bar at the next level and we went right below it. So we just went, went down just a little bit and it affected our level. So hopefully we can get that back up fairly easily. Our chronic absenteeism actually improved by 1.3%, but it is still classified as yellow because it is considered high at 16.8% overall. These dashboard results mirror the positive trends seen in CASP and CASP data. And it just shows that we continue to perform well over county and state averages while maintaining that steady growth over time, as well as a focus on which areas we need to continue to pay attention to.
I was going to comment on the absenteeism.
Yes.
And I really wish they dropped the suspension rate. And mostly because someone either would need to be suspended or they don't need to be suspended.
I agree, I know.
But the reason I bring up chronic absenteeism is because I've noticed since COVID that parents tend to go on vacations or there seems to be a much more open idea that we'll just miss because we want a long weekend or we're going to do this because there's shorter lines at Disneyland or whatever. Where prior to that, and I know generationally, I'm just kind of old, that would never happen. And you know, back in the day. So I'm wondering if it's been a change of attitudes and also canvas where you can kind of miss. And then of course, you're, you're still all caught up and it kind of encourages that to an extent. Not that we can do anything about it, but is that reflective of just us and our scores?
Oh no, that's everywhere.
Or everywhere?
Oh yeah.
What I'm saying is, so does that mean everyone's in the yellow? Because I don't know what the data looks like for that.
No, let me, for example, because I follow up on this one. Again, we're, our chronic absenteeism rate, and I can go back and pull a recent report from Amanda Debert, one of our coordinators, she actually provides that every month to us. We, our absentee, chronic absenteeism rate is around 15%. I'm just going to spitball it pretty close. It was above 20 coming out of the pandemic.
Yeah.
Like in '22, my first year here, it was much higher. So our chronic absenteeism rate has come down, but across the state, it was in the 30s and 40s. And so even now, the state averages is like 18 to 20 where we were. And we're now between, we're between 13 and 15%. And our goal is to be lower than 15 or I think, yeah, lower than 15. I'm looking at Mr. Tukwa. And so we're, we're, we're just kind of right there. We might have ticked up a little bit, but we're, again, like the other metrics.
We did go down. We went down, but it's just, it's still considered at a high level. Yeah. And it is, it is a state trend. It is a nationwide trend. It's like everyone's understanding about the importance of it, it just kind of changed. There is a lot of work going on in this area, speaking of Amanda and the work that she's doing and really bringing it into MTSS and sitting down in teams at sites and talking about those kids and how can we intervene and support them? So it's a continued focus. I think there's an overall culture change, but there are also a lot of kids that fall under the chronic absenteeism, which is missing the 10%, who have lots of barriers and needs. And it's about working with the families and figuring out how to support them so that we can turn that around. All right. Just a few key observations. We didn't get into this on the slides, but I'm pointing it out now. And there is an accompanying report that goes into a lot more detail. But these are just a few grade level trends. Elementary had growth in ELA, math and CASP and has had that for three consecutive years. There's middle school growth on CASP, math and CASP for three consecutive years. Middle school ELA improved from 23 to 24, but maintained in 25. High school ELA has had growth for three consecutive years. And then high school math and CASP have had, had a little change. They've stayed pretty static. So just looking at the impact across the grade levels is interesting. Graduation rate remains among the highest in the region, but we are also quite proud with that A through G completion growing and the CCI as well. And then that small decline in English learner progress indicator. But I also want to point out, if you dig into the data, that our long-term English learners, which are those students that we just can't reclassify, that have just not made that progress, had some really good growth in CASP for ELA and math, which is interesting. So there is academic growth happening there. It's just not enough to help them reclassify. So I want to conclude by sharing, these results reflect the collective effort of our educators and leaders. I can't say that enough. And the focus that they've had on learning. Through our focus on professional learning communities, we've built stronger alignment across schools and grade levels and we continue to emphasize results, ensuring that every student's progress is visible, measurable and supported. We are proud of where we are and the growth that we've made and we are committed to continuing this focus on academic achievement and continuous growth across the district. And I thank you for your support.
Thank you. Faith, I wanted to ask you questions on the supporting document. Am I allowed to do that?
Of course.
I don't know if you, it's probably not going to be on the slideshow, right?
It's attached to the agenda.
It's attached to the agenda. Are we able to see it?
Yeah. No, I can't, I don't think we can pull, I don't know if we can pull it up, but you can ask.
So I wanted to just comment on some of these. So again, I'm a teacher, so I understand like the CASP data as a teacher, like not everything's about CASP because it's not. And I totally get that. So when I'm making these comments, I understand that. But unfortunately, or however you want to say it, that's what the public sees and what we're, everything's based on, right? So on, on page one, and I guess you guys could follow along, the board members here to see it. So on page one, let me put these readers on, I can't see. So on page one for grade level for elementary for ELA, I was looking at the pre-COVID for, so I was looking at fourth grade. Fourth grade had 64% of students proficient in 2018, 19. And now it's 56%. But if you go across it, it was 64, 51, 50, 54, 56. So my question is, and I don't just see this here. So this is, I'm, I'm just asking questions or maybe things we can think about. Because is why in fourth grade? What is it in fourth grade that we're not even getting back to pre-COVID? Because you know, we're like four, five years out now and they are really not making as much progress as we, we would like. So that was in ELA. And then in math, underneath that for fourth grade, pre-COVID was 61 and now we're at 53. And I understand the thing about COVID, but it was 46, 50, 54, 53. So why, like, and it was specifically in fourth grade having, not making, having that? And I, and I know when I talked to Mr. Sorenson, who's going to do our math data, he was bringing that up to me too, like what's going on with? And it's not just our district, I know that, but it's something with fourth grades at the curriculum. I, I don't, I don't know what it is, but just some things to maybe note.
Could it be connected to the fact that they probably couldn't do preschool? It's a lack of preschool.
That, because if we go backwards, that might, those kiddos might have been like a TK Kinder age, I have to do the math. They might have missed, that might, I don't know.
Yeah, just questions, like to dig into. And then for fifth grade math, so I'm on that same page, pre-COVID was 54 and now it's 48. And you see after COVID, obviously they dipped to 39, but they're not even in the 50th percentile. So, okay, so there was.
I guess with both of those, definitely the fourth grade ones, I, I don't want to dismiss the growth that they've made though. And I am, you know.
No, I'm not dismissing it, but yeah. I just am bringing up questions, like my mind is like, why? I want to, I want to know more why.
But you could ask the same question for the other grades. They're, they're all below pandemic level and they're all showing growth. So I guess I'm trying to understand.
Well, like ELA third grade went from 53 to 59. That's six points.
Yeah. Well, and that's true. And one thing is you're always going to see anomalies from like one grade.
Depending on the class you have.
Yeah, you know, and different grade levels. I mean, you.
Yeah, I know. I'm just bringing these up, things to maybe think about. And then the next page, page two for middle school.
Yeah.
For sixth grade, if you look at sixth grade, pre-COVID 59% and now 59%. And it was 59, 58, 55, it's stagnant.
I see that.
So why is that stagnant for sixth grade ELA? And then math, for sixth grade math, again, they were 48 pre-COVID and now all these years out were 47.
Yes, I see your point.
So it's kind of like, those are just questions I have, like I wonder why. And then the high school 11th grade math was pre-COVID 44%. And now we went, we haven't even gotten back there. We're 36, 38, 38, 39. So I just want, like what can we do to help teachers? Or what, what is the, what's missing there? Like what's the gap? Like what can we do to help there? And then the third page for the EL students, the English language learners, right? 30% in 1819 and in ELA and now 19%. That's a huge drop. And, but it was after pandemic, 19, 14, 17, 19. It's like, and it's, it's quite different than the 63%, which is, you know, and the 56 below it. And then the SWD is Students with Disabilities, that's correct, right?
Yes.
Just to be sure. So 25 to only 28%. And they were 28% the year before and 24. So those are just some questions. And then one more in math underneath there. The EL students were 23% proficient in 1819 and now they're 17%. And they were 17% the year before and they were 13 before. So what, what's the breakdown? Like what's happening? And then Students with Disabilities, 18% and now it's only 19. So that, that is just remaining kind of stagnant. So I would just think that we would have a little bit more, and I'm not taking away the growth that we have because we have some growth and it's great. And I know our school, our district is way ahead of, I get that. But we, like if you're competitive, right? We, even if you're the best, you can always be better. Like we want to keep. So those are just questions to ask. I'm not judging, I'm not blaming, I'm just asking questions.
That's fine.
I was going to comment a little bit. This is mostly what we're doing in PLCs though, as well as looking at the data.
And actually looking at the local data. So this, schools will all look at this, you know, as they get this data for the big picture, but they're taking it more to that deeper level. And we have our common assessments, which are aligned to this. And so they're examining and analyzing kind of like what they need to do based on that.
And I got to give a shout out to the science teachers in eighth grade who went from 38%. This is eighth grade.
Oh, yeah.
I know that, and the high schools are doing amazing.
To 47.
But it went from 38% and steadily improved to 47%, which is really impressive. And there was another one I saw that was, was steady increase as well. So I know that there's like, there's peaks and valleys and sometimes a class and, but I think.
But that's not to take away from what you're sharing. And I will go back and if I can provide any like background information on why we think some of those things might have happened.
And sometimes I forget what grade, but one grade, in kindergarten, they were COVID kids. So they didn't get them, I understand that. So I'm not, and right now I'm not thinking like which ones were those. I can't remember if it's the fifth graders or if I, I'm unclear of that at the moment. But I know that is a big piece. But like for the 11th grade and, and things like that and the ELs, that's, I really think we could do, we really need to move them a lot higher for sure.
I do want to say, and Mr. Purdue, I'm sorry if I interrupted you, was, were you sharing more? No, okay. And I agree with you. We have had a focus on ELs, ELs over the last few years. And I, as, I, one of the challenges, it might be different from the district that you work in, is that we have a very small, we have a much smaller group, you know, 5%. And so that plays a different role in terms of the kind of support that we provide. And how, it's harder to provide, to get our staff to understand how to support them in different ways because, you know, they're in classrooms where people have 180 kids. And so trying to figure out that type of support as they get older. That's not to dismiss the fact that we are working very hard. We have provided a great deal of PD and we have seen a lot of progress in this area. So even though what you're pointing out is valid, I have also seen a lot of growth and we will continue to stay committed to it. Because I think that there's, there's some energy around it right now. So I appreciate you pointing it out.
And there's always different things and in, in different circumstances going on that you could say, oh, you know, and kind of put that back to. I would just point out like some of these grades, especially fourth grade and lots of districts are just remaining stagnant, kind of not really going. And I'm, I'm trying to figure out, I like, I don't, I don't know why, like what is happening there? So.
Well, and to your point, and that's one of the reasons why we actually highlighted Altamirrieta, because they had an 11, as a schoolwide, 11% increase in ELA and a 10% increase in math.
At every grade level.
At every grade.
At every grade level.
So like I said, there's a little something special sauce over at Altamirrieta right now.
That's what I'm saying, share it, let us all in on it so we can do it.
They are, they are sharing amongst their teams. So any other questions? No, thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right. So next up, we have item F5, which I don't know, should I just call to table this? And can we discuss it and call to table it?
I would recommend that you make a motion to table this item and have a conversation.
Sure. Well, I move to table this item and to have a conversation.
Second.
All right. All, should we?
Probably roll call vote just to be safe.
Should we have a conversation first?
Yes, sorry.
Yes. So this item is, is going to impact teachers in the, in the classroom directly. I got a lot of communication about this particular issue. And so I wanted the teachers to have an opportunity to voice their concerns about it. So there's, this is mostly about having personal items in your classroom, whether you have a mini fridge or whatever might be in there. Energy costs are going up dramatically. And so we definitely need to have, to really think about this and look at the spaces that we have and everyone's unique situation. I think that'll be a, a task for the administrators at each site to evaluate. But I would like to hear from the teachers and the people who are impacted first before we take a vote on this particular issue. So I think if we would table this until December, that would be my suggestion.
So how do we get the teacher feedback though?
Well, I think there's people.
You have teachers here.
There's folks that have that. I know the, the teachers that, that reached out to me, they're going to, they would be happy to be able to provide some input. And I think, I think the other part is just, also just processing it, right? This idea that, oh, this is happening, why is it happening? We can put out information because it's not as if we're going to say, hey, yeah, go ahead and plug in all that stuff. So it's definitely going to have an impact, just like fire insurance and now our electrical bills and everything. It's a problem. We have a huge problem.
I think it'd be helpful and to, and again, we can talk with Lisa, we can have that conversation. It's also true with classified staff. And if it's, if it's people having an individual thing versus, okay, we can't have individual things, but can we put one in the break room, be like a microwave, right? Where it's a little more accessible. I mean, clearly there's a need to make a reduction because all of a sudden, I mean, with the, the state only providing us a two and a half percent cost of living increase, but so-called Edison at 14%, that, that, where's that 12% coming from? It's coming out of general fund, which means it's not funds for anything else we have. So there's a need to do something. And so the other part too is both in this one, or maybe it'd be helpful too, and we can work with Darren's team about, because we talk about energy conservation guidelines. Maybe if we also provide some information about what those guidelines would be? That would help like wrap our heads around, okay, what do we got to do here? In terms of what should go, what can stay? And, but I know that like specifically it's things like, we would like to turn the air conditioners off on the roof at certain buildings during the summer, when they're not going to be in use and nothing's going to happen. We don't need them to inadvertently come on and surge, right? Because what happens to our electric bills when we have to surge something like that?
Sure.
How that spikes the energy consumption. And so we actually had that happen. We had one whole school surge all at once that was not, it was a miss, something happened over there at one of our sites. And so then that resets our, our cost for a whole year. We need to avoid that. So we need to be a little smarter than that. And I, and I do appreciate, I know this is true. I've worked in schools now for 30 years. Teachers love to keep the door propped open, but that means the air conditioner is not operating efficiently or that's propped open to keep the fan running to keep during the air turnover. However, it doesn't operate efficiently and then we're just, you know, I mean, what do you do at home?
And to that.
Right? You don't like open the door and turn the air conditioner on.
I think also when we were looking at our facilities master plan and our projects to make sure, I guess if we have more efficient air conditioning units, that would be helpful. And the LED lighting at the stadiums would probably be very helpful. And of course, I want to make sure that the district office is complying as well. I heard that loud and clear. And.
I had my individual, because I have a.
An iguana?
No, no iguanas. I have a standard, no, there's no pets upstairs, go up and look. I have an individual printer and I'm like, I don't, I don't need this. I have an individual printer and I'm like, I don't, I don't need this. So I had that removed because I can walk down the hall and pick up a copier off the coffee machine. Because even though it didn't necessarily say, but it is plugged in, it is, I don't need that. So those are those individual things that we can do that make a difference.
So in terms of, I appreciate that it was pulled because that was my question. I emailed you, it's on my little thing, but where's the accountability component? I mean, is this something that you go around and like you're the refrigerator police to the teachers? I don't understand how that's, what the resolution's designed to do.
It's not necessarily to have a police force out there.
I mean, I don't know what, I didn't get it.
On the other hand, we can in essence patrol, like, right? It's, it's not like, we don't need to come out and like every, do a sweep and pull everything out. On the other hand, let's, let's think about that.
Sure.
Right? I mean, again, the analogy is you don't open the door to have fresh air from the outside and turn your air conditioner on at the same time. We don't do that at home, but why would we do it at school then?
Sometimes I'm struggling to talk, as you know, but if a teacher has a student working alone in his or her classroom, they prop open the door and they're told to do that.
Right, there's, sometimes there's needs.
So yeah, if you had indoor corridors, that wouldn't even be a problem.
Right. I think each one of those ones matter. But yeah, and again, it's not to be, you know, come down with a police task force on energy, but we just need to.
Send in the SROs to pull your coffee pots. That's amazing.
And I think you are, to your point, Mr. Purdue, it's also kind of, it gives direction to us as we go down to the master facilities plan to look at efficiencies, right? And even was mentioned in the workshop today, we do intend on bringing to the board a stadium lighting project for the summer to replace them with LED lights that will, will pay for themselves in, I think about 10 to 12 years pays for that cost, just in electricity savings. And they will last much longer than that.
Right, maybe quicker if SCE keeps raising the rates.
Yes.
We have no idea. But I, I do think, to your point, it's another friction zone. Administrators have a tough job. They do have to tell people sometimes to do things they don't want to do. But I think it's important to be able to start having the conversation and making sure that everyone's aware of the need and, and to be thinking about what they're going to do. So.
Okay.
Appreciate it. All right. Moving on. Oh, did we, we did not vote. So to, to table and push to the December meeting, I think we had a, I called for a motion, we had a first and a second. Roll call vote. Well, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries five zero. Item F6, approval to award a contract of venture construction and management in the amount of $1,870,000 for the Murieta Valley High School Pool Modernization Project. That calls for a motion.
So moved.
Second, wholeheartedly.
All right. Any, any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries five zero. Approval of deductive change order for contract C0001273 for the Food Services Infrastructure Project. Calls for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries five zero. Item F8, review of associated student body financial reports for the quarter ended September 30th, 2025. The board received this report for review. Closed session. Oh, don't we have to adjourn? Am I missing a page?
Do you have the part, do you have G1?
Public comment regarding.
Oh, public comment regarding closed session items. Do we have any public comment cards regarding closed session items?
No.
No action will be taken during closed session. As such, there will not be a report out. The board will adjourn the meeting at the conclusion of closed session. I call for a motion to adjourn to closed session for items G2 and G3 listed on the agenda at 7:16 PM.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.